Adam Clark, could you please read the room?
Certainly, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Most of the agenda is proposed.
With the proper second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is a continuation of needing more time to take a look at our CIP process, so I think we know you have something you burn to say right now.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, just a few comments. Everything's the same as you had last week, I think there was some additional information that was submitted by Mr. LaPointe for the waste management bonds that would be issued in their project list, and there was only just one small change we had a mistake on in the engineering one, they moved forty-five thousand from the Haven Avenue Bridge replacement to the Lower Sink Creek improvements because it was a higher priority. So again, just one change, kind of a line item change type of action there. And then under the ranking of US 63, it was changed from a high six to a high three, again, that was just a typo that we had caught later, so, other than that, everything's the same as you had last week.
All right. Were there any specific questions during that week or anything that folks needed to see? Or you want us to continue taking a look at some of the departments or how you want to proceed?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, or should we wait till we go through the list? Is that how we were doing it?
That, we were going section by section.
We have enough time for that. Or maybe I can just throw out an idea?
We've got half an hour. Yeah, we got, we got time, but we want to continue going through, pick up where we left off last week, and just take a look at some of those departments, so, do you remember where we left off? Don't look at Michelle.
We were...
We go here, actually.
Well, can I ask a question anyway?
Yes, sir.
So, we're not going to do the Fourth Street Bridge, and that's in here. Could we take, how do you take some of that money and put it, the airport needs about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to fix a couple of the tenants' parking lots. They're just terrible shape, and there are tenants that, you know, paying us a bunch of money to rent facilities out there. Is that, do you have to make a motion, or how do, can, can we at least study that idea, or?
So you...
It would be a, it's, it would be a capital improvement, to me, it'd be like the public market, you know, we keep that fixed up for the tenant.
It would be a paradigm shift as well, because the conversation has always come about whether or not we want to subsidize for some of the projects out there, and I guess if there's a consensus by council, that's something we can start moving forward.
Well, then, one other thing, I took a tour of the corporate hangar, there's, you know, the million-dollar airplane stored out there, it leaks like a sieve, that thing's in terrible shape, somebody, we got to get out there and get that fixed soon. Anyway, what's, what's the story?
Well, in terms of financing, which I think is what the first question was, I can't tell you about the airport hangar, I don't know if that's been turned in for a project or what, but parking lots are a general corporate purpose, they're not an essential corporate purpose like the bridge, so it, we would have to reallocate funds to do that, it would also probably have to be taxable bonds since it's being rented out, so they're, that's not an easy thing to switch around at this late hour, but we'd have to figure out what could be done.
So, I think, I think also I heard, can we take a look at that, study that, to see how we do, so we can make sure we get that taken care of if we need to. The other part about the leaking in the hangar, you want to speak to that?
Good evening, Councilmembers of Tardy, Keith Gaspari, Airport Director, if it's the hangar, Tom, that you're mentioning, that could be Hangar Five, that has leaked for some, many, many years, that hangar was recently estimated for a hangar roof repair, gutters and whatnot, at just about sixteen thousand dollars, I put that along with David Hughes from ADCom into our, I'll say fiscal year 2017 grant application under the IDOT Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Fund request, so we anticipate the state acting on that list of projects in addition to that and others in that application sometime, I suspect we'll get that grant twenty, I would say August of this year.
And the parking lot, is that also?
Parking lot, it's, it's, that grant program is for eligible physical infrastructure, unfortunately, parking lot equipment is not included in the grant language for that program. I made that request earlier this spring, and I suspect that the grant language would not include that equipment, I, I would like to think that they would relax those restrictions on equipment like that, but to my understanding, that has not happened yet.
So, when we say equipment, is it the parking lot, the concrete, or whatever the surface is, is broken up, so when you say equipment, are we talking about what?
Ticket dispensers, exit devices, pan foot stations, but both the parking lot pavement and the wrong car pavement and some other parking lots and streets, both Betsworth Drive and Livingston Lane certainly could use some pavement rehabilitation in the coming term.
What I, what I was referring to was the parking lot for the fixed base operator and the airport fire station.
That's correct.
Those, those parking lots, not, not the big, general, not the...
Not the equipment.
Yes, just the parking lot.
Okay, okay.
It was just an idea, because I took a tour the other day, and it's, people coming into that FBO, and there's some heavy hitters that come through there, as you know, to get on that parking lot, it's, it's just terrible.
It's, it's, it needs some servicing.
Pretty tough shape.
It is.
Anyway, an idea.
So that was my question, so, does the, does the granting that we receive, does that mostly cover the runways, taxiways, or could it also cover some of our parking lots as well for the, for the FBO?
The FA grant applications that we get in the funds are first strictly for airside development only.
Okay.
And there is a limited pot of money through the IDOT program, I believe it's an AD20 match, that provides taxi street pavement to those areas on each side of, let's say, for example, our tea hangars.
Right.
But for landside development only, FA funds cannot be turned over for that type of purpose.
Okay, 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 all right, thank you, thanks, Tom, for that. Any other, any other questions within there?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Tom doesn't, I'll have my annual question, you know what it is?
And you?
How do, how do we start saving for our transfer station?
I think Mark Rice needs to address this, first of all, I have no estimates of the cost, it would definitely, if someone gives me an estimate of the cost, I'll tell you what the garbage rate increase would need to be, I can't work in a vacuum, so, that's what I've got now.
Don't we know it'll be a minimum of five million dollars? Wasn't that a number that we were given some years ago? Yes?
Public Works Director, I tried to get some of the notes from our previous meetings from years ago, and wasn't able to get any of those, so, it was my understanding that that process kind of stopped that location, size and expense, so I think the first thing to do is probably get the Public Works Committee together and determine exactly what it is we want, if it's a full-blown transfer station, or if it's a recycle center, or what it is, and then go about proceeding from there as far as location, size, estimated cost.
I guess I would hope we could continue to start saving money now, because we know it's going to be an expensive project, even if it's five years from now.
I wouldn't argue that, if, if in fact that's on the target.
Would that, would that show up in Public Works or in Facility Management, where would it show up?
It's not going to show up there right now because it's not in.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, we were on the, we actually did the Planning Department last, last time, so going in the order of the packet, if they wanted to go through department by department, Cultural and Arts Center would be the next one, go through the sheet on. Ken just had the three projects listed there, it was broken out into Center for the Arts, Youth Pavilion and Amphitheater.
What's the amphitheater, why does that cost us twenty-five grand? For twenty grand? That's just routine maintenance?
For capital improvement, excuse me, related to the amphitheater, it's more things that, in terms of performances and so forth, there are a number of things, like the amphitheater stage needs an upgrade of electric service to allow for the kinds of acts that can come in and the electrical needs that they, they require chairs for performances, those types of things, so it's, it's more related to that.
More questions about Kent's project?
The next department on the front sheet was Engineering, maybe backwards, so maybe we have to go back a couple sheets in your packet to think they're put in the wrong order, but Engineering was the next department.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking here at the engineering project stuff, and you see Burden Creek levee and Burden Creek Dam repairs, there's zero dollars, the condition of Burden Creek, is that something to where it needs to be looked at, because I've gotten a couple of calls as far as issues with Burden Creek?
I believe Burden Creek, we, it's part of our, what is it, 2015 or 16 to 2020 projects, right, and we also...
Very fortunate, there's, there's a lot of different parts of Burden Creek that are reflected here, the ones that Engineering deals with, the Burden Creek levee, when we did our certifications of our levee system, that particular levee is a little bit low, it'll handle the hundred-year storm, but there's no freeboard, so we may have to raise that, that'd be a core requirement, right now, the Core is working with us to do some other things we need to do on the levee that isn't quite as high a priority, so, I'm showing that as kind of a placeholder to remind us that we may have to do that someday if the Core pushes us for that, because that can severely affect the flood maps and who pays for insurance and that sort of thing, but right now, we're not having to do that immediately, they're more interested in having some of these other things done. The Burden Creek Dam is a dam that's way out to the northeast, there are some minor repairs there, but again, we prioritize those against the other things we need to do on the levee, and in kind of talking to the Core, that's something that could wait a little while, we will have to eventually do it, so again, that's kind of a placeholder just to keep it in front of us so that we know that we'll have to do that eventually. I think what you might be talking about is really more of a maintenance issue that relates to the lower part of Burden Creek and some cleanup, which should be more of the maintenance department to handle that.
Just one other quick question, I know that overpass is going over 63 there where it goes under now where the railroad is, do you know, does that have an impact on Burden Creek in any way, shape or form, or?
No, it really doesn't, the, the reason that there's water there is that that underpass, as low as that is, is actually below groundwater, so there's a pump station there that artificially keeps that groundwater level down, and some of the piping system that drains to the pump station is clogged, and that's why you're getting the water coming to the surface and running out on the street, so with the overpass, that won't be needed anymore for that purpose.
Eric, Pat and I took a tour of the tunnel, it's full of sand, is that what you're talking about, is, that's not, you guys, that's maintenance issue? Okay.
Eric, while you're up there, something was mentioned a little bit earlier about Sink Creek, are we reallocating, reallocating some money to that, is that what I heard?
Yes, this is for the next phase, if you recall, we cleared out trees and brush and some other debris and things last year, this is the next phase from Cedar Terrace downstream to actually do some more shaping, straightening, make that flow better, and so that's currently under design, and we believe this is close to what it will cost, we have some estimates on that, so we should have some information put together on that sometime yet this year, and hopefully bid that, and we'll see, but that's the next phase, we kind of have been promising those folks out there that we would do.
From your perspective, I'm told that we're somewhat wasting our time out there until we fix the bottom end of that, which is outside of the city limits in the county, is that, is that accurate or not exactly?
Well, there's, there's still work that needs to happen outside the city limits, creating a better outlet for the whole drainage way, but these improvements should help there near the subdivision to keep the water flowing, you know, faster and straighter through there, right now, it kind of winds through there, so we believe that these are improvements that will still be beneficial, it won't solve everything entirely, but it will be beneficial and would still be usable with whatever we do in the future, so, we just kind of indicated because of the large expense of that project, we would start working towards these and try to, you know, keep working away at it, so this was kind of the next phase.
So is there anybody from your department or anyplace else in City Hall that communicates with the county about that situation?
We have, excuse me, we have not, prior to this administration, Mayor Clark was having some communications with the county, and there was not a lot of interest in them doing anything, so, that's another hurdle we've still got to talk about.
Got you, thanks.
Eric?
Yes.
I noticed here that there's two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars that was requested for sidewalk infill with medium, is, is that the money that the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, those projects that they had suggested?
Yes, it is.
They are, and so those are, they got axed, basically?
Yes, there was, not quite as high a priority, if you remember, the Complete Street Committee had some correspondence prior to this, it indicated that doing the pedestrian over, or pedestrian accommodations on the overpass along Highway 63 was a higher priority, and so that's part of what we have there in the Highway 63 South segment match, is some funding to help match that, and that's one of the things that's in there, we've secured a lot of federal funding for that project, but we still have to match it, so, we had some discussions with the Complete Streets folks, and I think they kind of understood that that was still a higher priority than these other little infill projects, so, it's one that we think will, you know, it's probably really the only opportunity we'll have to put something on that overpass for pedestrian accommodation and bicycle accommodation, if we don't do it now, it probably would never happen, so, that was the highest priority of Complete Streets folks, I believe.
So, so the sidewalk infill at 230 was, was the suggestion from the Complete Street Committee, is there a way to, I mean, is there thought that that could go in either 18, 19, 20 or 21's requests?
It's, yeah, it's definitely possible, and certainly, there needs to be some discussion with the council about how you want to fund sidewalk infill, that's, that's one way to do it, is if the city pays for it, there's other options, and certainly you'll be setting a precedent once you start with that, so, there needs to be, and the committee is aware of that, we had a very good meeting with that committee, or members of the committee and the mayor a week or two ago, and so, I think we're kind of all on the same page, and, because if the mayor feels differently, we can, we can say so.
And then, two other things, that with Sergeant Road by Trail Bridge, number one replacement, there's one-hundred-and-twenty thousand earmarked for that, is, is that part of what's going to happen with University Avenue? Or is that separate?
This is actually separate, this is one of the old railroad bridges along Sergeant Road where the rail used to run, and now there's a trail, it's an old timber bridge, the timbers are actually getting very rotted out and weak, in fact, leisure services and Engineering worked together this spring to kind of do some things, some of the railing was falling over and the fencing, and we've made some temporary repairs there, but that's one that we need to do something about, or we're going to have to close the trail, and it's a very well-used trail, so, the plan is to design it in-house, and then we would let a project have a contractor do that work, and we remove the timber bridge and then put in just pipe culverts to make it less, or more maintenance-free, it would be totally maintenance-free, but a lot less maintenance, we just put in pipe culverts.
Okay, and then, final thing is, the bridge repairs, there's two-hundred-and-ninety thousand approved for that, does any of that include Park Avenue Bridge?
It doesn't at this time, right now, we've unfortunately had an incident over on the Sixth Street Bridge, if you've driven over that, you notice there's a plate there that people kind of go over, and there's kind of a bump there, and so that'll be our first priority, so we'll be working with our consultant to figure out how much that's going to cost, and then we can see what else we can do after that, but that's become our number one priority to try to get that fixed as soon as we can, and we'll kind of see how far the money goes, but Park Avenue could be a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Eric, I got one quick question, again, back to the Fourth Street canopy, there's ninety thousand dollars here in 17, fiscal 17, we obviously saved some money up before this time.
That's correct.
But now, maybe it's a question for show, where does it, now where does it go? If we, you recommend rejecting the bid, if we reject the bid, what do we do with that money?
Well...
We borrowed some of it, do we reallocate it to another project, or?
Well, actually, our plan was to, once we rejected the bids, then we have, we can start talking to the contractors, the one that bid, others that could have bid, and try to see, you know, what we might do differently, possibly rebid it, or maybe there's some other options we can consider, so, but we do need to reject the bid, so that kind of opens it up for us to legally start talking to folks again about it, and so we thought we'd take some time and, and look at that, look at maybe some other potential options, and then come back to the council and probably have a work session or somehow present some various ideas on that, I think, you certainly can just leave it, and it's going to continue to deteriorate, that's probably not a good opportunity, at least in our mind, but, so we, we do need a little time, but the first part of that is to reject that bid.
But we have, based on this and previous CIPs, we have money to do something.
This, this would have given us enough money to match the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar gaming grant.
Okay.
Anyone else from Engineering? Noel, who's next on your list?
Next is Finance.
Okay, we can talk about Finance, so I typically budget one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, that's for the issuance costs, and I, it's minimal, and it really depends on the conditions of the market, sometimes we get a premium, in which case we probably won't need that much money, sometimes if bonds, we've had very good luck, we have not ever had underwriters take advantage of the full discount that they could take, if they would do that, then I won't have enough there and I'll have to use some from another bond issue, but that's just to cover the costs of underwriting, underwriters discounts, Moody's rating, all the things you have to do to sell bonds.
Any questions on Finance?
And that's for the eight million, or is it for the tech works bonds too? This is just for the eight million? The CIP stuff?
Yep, I'm hopeful that it will cover everything, so do both.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'm hopeful, we'll see.
Next is Waterloo Fire Rescue.
I have a question, not a question, a comment, I saw the news ambulances, Pat, those, just from a layman, I would think those save us a substantial amount of money rather than buying those gigantic, whatever those things were, Kenworth or?
Sure, Patrick, we're Chief Fire Services, we went away from a mid-range truck chassis to a Ford 450, and it saved about forty thousand on the chassis alone, so the last ambulance we purchased was for just over two-hundred thousand, and we're expecting to get into one next fiscal year if it's approved for two-hundred and five.
You didn't get a new brush truck, I see.
No, we did not.
Next is Information Services.
Chris, could you maybe talk a little bit about what you've got in mind for the website redevelopment, I think we've been hearing about that for a while, so can you give us kind of an overview?
Sure, Chris Young, IT Director, at this point, we're just kind of interviewing some different vendors, and looking at what other cities have done, we looked at, kind of looked at the top fifteen cities by, by population in Iowa, and ours is, our website is definitely very outdated, we're looking, one of, one of the primary things that's going on right now is that people are going to websites more with mobile devices, which our site does not handle very well, if at all, so that's kind of one of the primary things, is, is we need to make it mobile accessible, studies have shown that more than fifty percent of people now are going to websites from a mobile device, whether it's their smartphone or a tablet, so that'd be kind of one of the big things, we also have a number of, I guess, rogue websites that have kind of popped up through the city that we'd, we'd kind of, we'd like to bring under kind of one umbrella, so that people have more of a one-stop-shop for all the data that they, for all the information they need, I think some of the complaints that we get now are, some of the information is buried several clicks, several pages down, so we're really looking, we'll do a study to find out what, what those things are that people really want to see, bring those to the front, you know, make it, obviously make it a, hopefully a site that looks great and gives, gives people the information that they need quickly.
Chris, what do you mean by rogue website? I don't, I don't understand what you're...
I guess we just have quite a few departments or, that have, you know, like the Fire Department has a website, I know the Arts Center does, but, you know, that one we'll probably keep separate, but there's, I don't know, so if maybe you can help me, there's a, we've had a list that we put together and...
So you want, you want to integrate everybody?
Well, where we can, it certainly makes sense for certain, I think for the Arts Center to keep their own because it's really specialized, but I think that there's some other ones that it might make sense to bring them under just the City of Waterloo website.
And at the, Chris has formed a technology infrastructure team, I had mentioned it a while ago, and this is a way to kind of bring all our departments together and a while ago, and this is a way to kind of bring all our departments together and kind of be on one accord, take a look at how we can do things together, and the website is one of the first projects that we try to integrate amongst departments as much as we can.
Is that an outside vendor that does that?
Yes.
Can I ask who's on the committee?
Our tech committee has about 15 people, we try to get about, we try to get representation from every department.
Gotcha, thanks.
Chris, when you look at the vendors, are you looking at vendors in the Cedar Valley?
We're looking at both in the Cedar Valley as well as, it appears in the research that there was several vendors that are Midwest-based, or use that loosely, not really in the Cedar Valley, that did the majority of city and municipal websites, so we've, we're looking at those, but we're also looking locally as well to see if there's somebody in the Cedar Valley that might be able to provide us with what we need.
Are you feeling optimistic about that?
I am. It's a lot better than it was when we started. I think when we first started, I wasn't sure that there was someone locally, but I think that we've, we've got a chance to stay local on this.
Suzie, didn't we use a local person to develop the website originally? I thought?
I believe so, it was developed prior to me, but the company that hosted the website was definitely local. There's, there's a lot of technology out there, and one of the things that makes it harder to go local is most of the local companies, certainly not all, but most of them don't have a lot of municipality experience, and so some, we're definitely weighing the options because when we do look at the bigger vendors who specialize in municipalities, we may be able to get more bang for our buck because this is all they do, and the functions and features that they're able to offer at a reduced cost because they've already developed these programs for other cities, is something that we're looking pretty hard at because we want to make sure that we have a website that can keep up with technology and that isn't already behind once we get going. So as Chris said, we have definitely interviewed some very great companies locally, and we're hopeful that one of them will be able to make the cut. It'll kind of come down to what features they're able to offer and what the cost is to be able to stay within budget, so.
But if you're looking outside the Cedar Valley, be like a Novus Agenda-type company?
Absolutely, I mean, Novus isn't one of them, but what we've kind of tried to do is look at what other cities have done that have great websites, and we are finding that majority of those are large vendors who do nothing but municipalities and counties, so they specialize in what our needs are. Again, we have had some success locally lately though, so we're feeling optimistic that there may be a local option, and, you know, at that point, if they can offer us the same features, then it comes down to cost, but we definitely want to make sure we're getting the features we need first and foremost.
The state just redid theirs, updated. You might check and see who did theirs.
I know, forward the information to you.
All right, thank you. Next is Leisure Services.
I have a question, is the, is the Sports Facilities Improvement Fund, is that the fund we hear about that we should be doing to save up to replace equipment at the Sportsplex? Is that what that is?
Paul Huddy, Leisure Services Director. The Sports Facilities Improvement Fund that I'm looking at here has a request of 70,000, was 100,000, reduced to 70,000. That is what we've been using for our facilities, non-Sportsplex, in other words, all the gold diamonds and that type of thing. I believe we did put kind of a placeholder in there, but it won't show here for the Sportsplex, if that's what you're asking about, and Michelle can help me a little bit with that, but any revenues in excess of expenditures at the Sportsplex are set aside for future improvements there. But Sports Facilities, this specifically would be for finishing up our lighting at Riverfront Sports, or Riverfront Sports Park. We've got one field remaining that has old wood poles and I would call it antique lighting, so we're hoping to replace those, be less, are much more efficient, less expensive to operate and match the rest of them.
I don't know where I saw it, but the chemical storage building, there was something about, maybe it's in the bills, putting in a heated floor? I thought there was a cold storage building. Do we have to have a heated floor?
There's a portion of that town that'll be heated where the chemicals that can't freeze will be stored, so it won't be the entire building.
Okay. There was no request by the library, so we can skip to the Police Department.
And on all these, Mr. Mayor, on all these budgets or these requests, each department doesn't include cars? That's kind of a separate, don't we do it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Except for Fire. Fire has to kind of buy their own?
This is based on price.
Okay.
I can answer that at the mic, Mark Ray, Public Works Director. Fire specs their own equipment, so it's not included in our vehicle and equipment, CIP.
Okay.
As well as, Dan Traub, Police, is included in vehicles.
Right. And Chief is?
And also those with fire trucks, they have a fire truck that's budgeted in the next five years.
Sure.
Fire would budget that as well.
Is that enough for body cameras, 5,000? I thought those were kind of expensive. I use about three cameras to, to get.
Dan Traub, Director of Safety, we know we're going to end up damaging them, so we're budgeting $5,000, that'll be about 10 cameras.
But we, are we fully equipped with cameras?
We, let's see, last count, I think we had about 80 currently, so we're, and we're, our plan is to get 150.
Okay. But everybody on the street has a camera?
All patrol officers have cameras, yes, sir.
Where's the impound storage building going to go?
That, we don't know.
Oh.
That's what we're trying to figure out, somewhere on city property, but we don't know where yet.
Is there room out at? Your palace? Your palace? Or is there not room?
Not currently.
Okay.
Any other questions for the Chief?
Last on the list, the number one in your hearts is sign in traffic.
Note to self, never have no MC any type of program.
SD, yeah.
Try to throw some entertainment in there.
Do, are we doing, Mr. Mayor, are we doing Green Hill and, no, we're not, in progress, Are we still trying to get a grant for that, or is that what we're trying to do, or? That's a high priority, isn't it?
Yes.
At least a lot of citizens think it's a high priority.
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic, we did discuss that, and I guess with planning and they thought when, if we take over University, that that could be part of that.
Okay.
Take a look at the whole project.
Thanks, Sandy. Waste management.
You said we're done. John, before the meeting, I asked you that question that I think is pertinent both for Jerome and myself, I'm not speaking for Jerome, but the issue is the clean out of Verden Creek and was, I don't think that this is on here, but could you just explain where that fits into?
Sure.
Okay.
John Lapointe, interim wastewater superintendent. Cleaning out of deposits that have collected in the Verden Creek Channel is, like Eric said, more of a maintenance issue. Our crews might be able to do it, but our crews have also been busy dealing with C-MOM-related issues, and that's a high priority to go out and fix areas of infiltration and inflow, and so we may end up putting together a little bid package and contracting that out. I'm working with Michelle on the money side of it, and I'm going to go out there Wednesday and, and look at that and try to develop an estimate of how much that would cost and proceed either with our crews doing it or contracting it out. And that's just an ongoing maintenance issue, so it won't end up in a capital improvements plan unless it's bigger than we thought.
And that would include a concrete waterway from Gates Park down to the tunnels?
I'm not real familiar exactly with that area that you're talking about, I'm going to go out there on Wednesday and look at that.
Okay.
So as I get more familiar and be able to answer that, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think I've asked this question before, but just to be clear, everything we're doing on waste management is, we're, we have a high priority on all the, the settlement we have with the EPA. We're doing those first before we do anything?
Yeah, and, and things that may not be on the list that are absolutely necessary, is that an appropriate statement?
So, yes, we are dealing with a priority, the highest priority things have to do with the EPA consent decree, and then as you saw in my memo, there's several things that have been stated that we addressed in the master plan. So the EPA has given us time to develop and prepare a master plan by the end of 2017, and that master plan will lay out major capital improvements in regards to the consent decree, but we're also trying to address what we can now.
I'm going to give Mr. Berger the last four minutes.
Two, three. I don't need four minutes, Mayor. Larry Berger with Spear Financial, we act as your financial advisor in doing the upcoming bond issue, and I wanted to address the council tonight to kind of poll the council also on the sale date, because we are looking at a sale date in the first part of June for selling the bonds, and what we typically will do is, Tom, recall that first of the meeting, is we will do a special council meeting. Mondays is your regular council meeting, and it's not my favorite day to sell bonds. We can sell it, but the market is, is full on Monday usually, and also, we like to, if we do anything as a nation to anyone else over the weekend, we kind of like the market to kind of settle down for that day. So what we are looking at would be June 7th, Tuesday, June 7th, but what I do need is, because what we will do is we'll take the bids on the bonds in the morning, and then later on in the afternoon, hold a council meeting to either approve the bids or reject all the bids. So you have to take the low bid by law or reject all the bids, but we do have to have the council either here presently in person or electronically to hold that meeting to get an affirmative action on the sale of the bonds. So I wanted to poll if we can get enough council members here on the 7th, that would be our recommendation, but if not, then we would go back to the 6th of June, Monday, and, you know, we may take a little market hit, we may take a little bit higher interest rate, because, again, there are a lot of sales on Monday, and that's not my favorite day, so.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Does it make any difference if June 7th is primary date?
It does not. Bond market is totally separate from all political goings-on.
I'll be here. Sure, I can be here. I can make it. I can make it.
Okay. Good. And also, next week is your public hearing, and I did want to come tonight. My daughter, who works with us at Spear Financial, actually will be out of state at a conference, and I already have a bond sale in Northwest Iowa next Monday for your public hearing. So I wanted to, if anyone had any questions about the process of the bond sale, I wanted to attend this meeting tonight just to answer any questions regarding that, if you have a question. We will be here the day of sale, we'll be here both in the morning to take the bids, and then we will make the presentation to the council later on, so you can ask the questions then too, but I wanted to give you that opportunity tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion for adjournment.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, with a proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's call our Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schenck?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda, any discussion or questions? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying, that motion passes. We have one request today.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to approve the request to begin the civil service process and appoint Facility Service Manager for the Waterloo Center for the Arts.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this request, is any discussion or questions on it?
Let's, let's just make sure we're all on the same page here about what exactly we're doing, Ken, if we could do that, seeing as there was quite a bit of misinformation last time.
Ken Shankel, Cultural and Arts Director, this is to begin the process for filling a vacant position, it's the Facility Services Manager. That's the person primarily responsible for managing the facility on evenings and weekends. That position has been vacant since, I believe, January, and we're looking to fill that, and we believe we have a good candidate within our facility, however, it is a civil service position, so it will be open for applications.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Does, does a, not an incumbent, but somebody in the system, do they get priority on the civil service process, or, you know, do they get five points like a veteran, or 10 points because they work here, or?
There's not a dedicated point system for promotions for a, for a non-bargaining position, but they certainly will rank higher typically in an interview simply because they know the facility, they know, you know, that they're very comfortable with the process, so.
Sure.
Usually, I would say that a internal candidate scores higher than an external.
In, in our system, you can't reallocate somebody, the state was always able to reallocate you to a higher position if you're in a series, you know, without going through, they just say, you get, you got promoted. We can't do that in our?
We still have to go through the civil service process. Some of these positions have, for instance, like Equipment Operator, there's Equipment Operator One, Equipment Operator Two, when they are in a series, like you said, then, then we can just interview internal candidates first before going out to the public.
Sure.
This one? This one really, there's never been a classification made for these positions, so...
That position is unique, in other words, what you're telling me.
Right, so we'll do internal and external altogether.
All right.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Just counsel. Mr. Schenkel, in interest of time and being proactive, had two requests that evening. Believing that the facility service specialist would move up to being manager, would leave the specialist position open. He's asking to at least start the civil service list. Would we at least agree to that?
Well, we met with Mr. Schenkel, and that was not the agreement we had, that we were going to review that position, see if we could outsource it, get part-time people, share with the young arena and sports plaques, all kinds of options. That was my understanding.
Well, here again, creating a list is just creating a list. You're not hiring or doing anything. It just speeds up the process.
Well, that's not on the agenda anyway.
No, no, I'm asking for...
To bring it next time.
Yes.
I think that'd be fine, as long as there's, you know, the understanding that some of us expect an ongoing conversation, that maybe the route we go in, it may not.
Sure.
So we all understand that, that's fine.
Yeah.
With me.
Okay, all right. So you need a motion to put it on the agenda next time?
Please.
So moved?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to begin the civil service list for a service...
Facility service specialist, right?
Yeah, thank you.
But to put her on the agenda for next time, right?
Right.
Yes, just to create a list.
Okay. Remember, last, Mr. Chairman, last time I asked about Susie's position. I'm still getting nervous about not having a conversation yet about her replacement. We have to really be proactive. I know the Water Works is going to replace their head guy a year from now, and they're already out starting the process. And, you know, she's got a pretty critical position, and we need to stay ahead of the curve. So I don't know how we do this, but...
But usually...
We need to start discussion, don't we?
We advertise for that position.
Yes, I think there needs to be, I don't know whether we do it as a work session or not, and this is just my opinion, I kind of wish the mayor was here. Him and I did have a discussion today about it. There needs to be some discussion on how it's going to be reorganized prior to...
Right.
...deciding how we're going to advertise and that sort of stuff. He does have some suggestions of how to reorganize those two departments. So I would recommend that maybe I can get with him tomorrow and get an email out as to maybe setting up a work session or something to discuss what options are out there and what we want to do.
And what you're talking about is splitting HR and city clerk duties.
Correct.
Yeah.
We have a motion, and I believe a second, on the civil service list. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, and the minutes of May 9, 2016 is proposed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the agenda and the minutes. Are any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have the agenda and the minutes. New business, travel requests.
We have some travel requests, once again. Scott Strater, combination inspector two, to attend plumbing plans examiner, Corvus Iowa, May 23rd, 24th, June 1st, 2nd, 7th, or 9th, 2016, not to exceed $199. Jeff Seibel, property safety inspector, to attend series eight-hour plumbing update, Cedar Falls, August 12th, not to exceed $239. Travis Einan, fire rescue, to attend PALS Advanced Life Support, Iowa City, August 25th, not to extend, exceed $252. Abraham Funchess, junior executive director, Rebecca Johnson, HR specialist, and Shelley Birch, administrative secretary, to attend the 2016 EEOC FEPA National Training Conference in New Orleans, July 11th through the 15th, not to extend, exceed $5,240.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the travel requests. Any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-odds, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following pre-authorizations to expend over $1,000. In the clerk's office amount, estimated shipping and handling, $7,500 for Novus Solutions Agenda Management Software licensing, license fee. In the culture and arts amount, an estimated shipping and handling, $2,323.36 for mounting, mading, and framing of Grant Wood Drawings for Exhibition at Waterloo Center for the Arts. Fire department, amount and estimated shipping and handling of $1,580 for audio grants for 76 employees. In the fire department, amount with estimated shipping and handling, $3,500 for two recruit hiring physicals. And leisure services, amount with estimated shipping and handling, not to exceed $17,750.85 for asphalt overlay and patching at Burns Park Parking Lot and Driveways. In leisure services as well, amount with estimated shipping and handling, $2,397.38 for electrical service at Chemical Storage Building. And for leisure services, amount with shipping and handling, $4,870.88 for electric boiler and materials for radiant floor heat at Chemical Storage Building. And next, leisure services, with amount and estimated shipping and handling, not to exceed $3,500 for oil and sand interceptor tank and overflow tank for Chemical Storage Building. Again, leisure services, with amount and estimated shipping and handling, not to exceed $4,000 for approximately 150 sheets of two-inch rigid foam for floor and wall insulation in the Chemical Storage Building. Mayor Hart's office, amount with estimated shipping and handling of $600 for the mayor's volunteer awards luncheon, the mayor's top teen awards reception, April 12th, 2016. Traffic operations, amount with estimated shipping and handling of $32.72 shipping and handling for shipping costs for the three-gun action assembly, which was not known at the time of submission of that cost. And finally, with traffic operations, amount with estimated shipping and handling, $1,795 plus $24 shipping and handling for a TDC Ultra Handheld Traffic Data Collector.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the pre-odds. Is any questions or discussion on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. And I'll make a motion to approve the budget line, budget line item amendments, which are filed at the city clerk's office, and also a motion to pay the bills this week. The bills are $3,135,314.95. That's three, comma, 135, comma, 314.95.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions about the budget line items.
Okay. Which one would you have there, Tim?
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Number seven, Susie. Does that mean we overpaid $430,000 in premiums?
No. What that is, is when we, we have stop-loss insurance, so when an individual's claims hit $100,000, then insurance steps in and pays them. When we get that, it's considered a refund, so it goes into revenue, and then the claims come in in expense, so we just have to do a budget amendment to move that revenue to the expenses.
Oh, so we, so in other words, we had $430,000 worth of...
Claims that exceeded that amount, so it goes in the revenue budget. We need to move it to the expense budget to cover the claims that it was meant to cover.
Okay. And number nine, this is for fiscal year 16, that we're approving TIF revenue of $3.7 million?
What you're doing is you're approving a budget amendment to use the TIF revenue to pay the project expenses that we have incurred during the current fiscal year.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. And number, on number 10, $500,000 of unbudgeted expenses. What, I mean, what are those extraordinary expenses that we didn't, must be? In other words, we're increasing the expense on the budget by that amount?
Correct.
And we have enough money in the fund to cover it?
Well, we do have, we do have some cash balance. It's, I would have preferred we not be doing this, but, yes. And this is, we've had, you know, as you all know, we've had some expenses with a consent decree, and there seem to be more operational expenses than were originally budgeted.
Okay.
So they are requested, we just think we're going to spend another half million dollars, and I think I need to budget it to be in compliance with state law, so that's what we're doing.
And number 14, Michelle, while you're there, $2.4 million anticipated refunding bond issue. What are we paying off, a bond with a new bond? Is that what we're doing? Is that what that means?
Generally, often when we get to the call date on a bond issue, we can get lower interest rates for, it's just like refunding your house. If your interest rate, current environment will allow you to do it at a lower interest rate, then you'll refinance your house so that you can pay less interest expense. That's exactly what we're doing with this bond issue.
Okay.
So it will save us interest expense, and it is on the 2008A bond issue...
Okay.
...that we're refunding.
Okay. And finally, on that SAFER grant, Pat, I thought the SAFER grant was free. Am I thinking of the, that one fire position? I thought that was free. I didn't...
I might defer to Michelle on that, but I think what they're doing was they're adding money that we downloaded from the grant. It is, there is no match with the SAFER grant.
Right, because, so what we're doing is we're budgeting for the grant-funded position that was never put in the original budget.
All right, thank you.
Michelle, if I could ask, going back to number 10 then, so will those items that make up that $500,000, will those come before the council individually, or...
Some of them already have. I mean, for example, the penalty for the EPA was $136,000.
Oh, so that's part of that.
You see, yes, and the actual line of amendment is in your packet, so you can see what budget lines are being requested to be increased.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the budget line amendments and pay the bills. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bills are paid.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion and a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our 5:30 council meeting today. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welber.
Here.
All right, right now, we will have a moment of silence. If you choose to stand, please do so. If you would like to sit, that is your option as well. All right, thank you. We will be led this evening by our at-large councilman, Mr. Tom Lynn.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may now be seated. I had a request from the audience that if council members could speak directly into the microphones, that would be great. It's a little hard to hear in the back, so if we can adhere to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and we are addam, adding item 1B2F liquor license, Main Street Waterloo, Lincoln Park, special Class C liquor outdoor service, new application, six-month license, application approval pending proof of removal or resignation of a board member with a felony, and also the approval of the minutes of May 9th, 2016 regular session as proposed.
Second. All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Council, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, we have an agenda. All right, we have some special proclamations this evening. Uh, now, right now, I would like to call up Bart McBride for Emergency Medical Services Week. Please come out, Bart. All right. Come on up, Pat. All right, this is for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency metal, medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas a third of Americans rate their households as being very well-prepared for a medical emergency, and emergency medical service providers have traditionally served as a safety net of America's health care, and whereas emergency medical service teams consist of emergency medical physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and whereas the members of emergency medical teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Now I therefore be it resolved, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do proclaim this week, the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week. So, Chief Trailer, I don't know if you have some information for us regarding this occasion?
Great, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Council, for the proclamation. We're, we're really blessed here in the Cedar Valley with a, with a true team concept when it comes to medical emergencies. We're fortunate Waterloo Fire Rescue does the transport for the City of Waterloo Advanced Life Support, and we've got two very, very good hospitals within our community. There are some cities around the nation, when an ambulance service arrives to deliver a patient for better care or higher level, level care, they're not able to release the patient for over two hours. And here in Waterloo, we have very great, a very good response times as well, so we've got two hospitals that receive patients in a timely manner. So, it truly is a team effort, and, and we're, we're privileged to provide this service, and we thank you for the proclamation.
All right, thank you, thank you. Service that you're glad is there when you need it. The next proclamation is from National Police Officers Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, so, if you would join us. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2016, as National Police Week, and May 18th of this year to be Police Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas, the law enforcements are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free men and women, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, it is known that all too often, police officers are killed in the line of duty nationwide. Our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all police peace officers everywhere. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2016, as National Police Week, and order all flags on all city facilities be flown and have staff on May 18, 2016, on Peace Officer Memorial Day. So, very important day, very important week. Chief, tell us a little bit about the occasions.
Well, sadly, we've lost several officers from Waterloo Police Department to, in the line of duty deaths. We've lost sadly a few officers off duty to heart attacks, suicide, and such. So, this is an important day for us, and I'd like to invite the community to a ceremony across the street from Cedar Falls City Hall in the park at 10 o'clock Wednesday morning. We're gonna have a ceremony remembering the officers who have lost their life, both on and off duty in the area.
All right, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. And I am looking in the audience and see some colorful shirts. I'd like to call up Gail Carter and anyone else that would like to come as well for Quota's 90th Anniversary Month. All right, come on. You got someone in there that can take pictures for you? All right. All right, Gail.
Hello.
How are you? All right. Please come on around. Some of you can come on this side, too. It's actually my best side. All right, so. All right, and some of you can come over here to make sure you're in the picture as well. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas Quota International of Waterloo, founded in 1926, is part of an international service organization devoted to promoting international understanding through friendship and service to communities for the common good. And whereas, the Service to Distinguished Women and Children Committee provides Quota Care Bears as needed to all area hospitals, Air Corp Helicopter Service, and the Waterloo Child Development Center for comfort to children and older adults experiencing a sudden trauma. Whereas, the Cops and Kids Reading Program encourages positive relationships between police officers and youth, ensuring all children have the opportunity to explore their full potential by providing over 5,426 books this year to 10 Waterloo Elementary Schools and individual police officers. And whereas, the Club Members clock over 120 hours to the Northeast Iowa Food Bank this past year, as well as making a monetary donation of $740. And whereas, the Speech and Hearing Committee awarded $10,000 in scholarships to students who are hard of hearing or who are majoring in speech pathology, audiology at the University of Northern Iowa. And whereas, the Service to Distinguished Women and Children Committee hung 92 hats and scarves in Lincoln Park this winter, provided bus tickets and food coupons to Hospitality House, donated 96 casseroles to the Catholic Worker House, all for the purpose to help clothe and feed the homeless in Waterloo. And whereas, the Eye Glass Committee provided eye exams and glasses for identified students in Waterloo schools. And whereas, the Quota Cub also gave financial contributions to Aspire, EPI, Girl Scouts, Job Foundation, Catholic Worker House, Quakerdale, to name just a few, and individual requests from parents and school workers. And whereas, through the cooperation of the City of Waterloo, Quota has been a successful part of our community for 90 years. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Quota 90th Anniversary Month. Wow, wow.
Thank you.
All right, and Gail, I'm pretty sure you have some comments for us.
I think you covered about everything in your notes already. Last year, we netted over $27,000 by selling nuts and tickets to our annual spring brunch, and we used this $27,000 to do all those things that you read just now. And we are quite excited about our 90th anniversary this year, and we thank you very much.
All right, all right, thank you. Let's give them a wonderful round of applause. And Gail, I'll tell you and the members of Quota, if you wanna stick around for the rest of the council meeting and get a, get a lesson in civil engagement, you're welcome to do so. If not, if you wanna leave, it's absolutely fine to do so as well. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda that's items 1 through 3, and within that are the bills payment. The bills payment this week are $3,135,314.95.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Any questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor, one question on the travel request, on Abrams' request.
Am I reading that right? The entire budget for fiscal year 17 is being used on one trip?
I'm gonna slip it through the mic. He wants to know if the budget is being used on one trip for your travel.
That's correct.
Okay.
For you, you'll see. This is, I believe it's mandatory training for the, the office to attend, and.
And it's absolutely critical that all three of you go?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welber.
Yes.
All right, those items carried.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number 2 is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. Item number 2 is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2017 sidewalk inspection and repair program, Zone 6.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, do we have any comments on file?
There are comments on file.
All right, in the clerk office. Were those in support or against, or wanting to talk to staff about situation?
Yeah, they were all about individual issues.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak or have questions about this particular item? Please come up, ma'am.
I don't know what we're supposed to do.
Uh, if you have, yeah, just come on.
I guess we're all kind of, we don't know exactly what we're supposed to do.
Well, we'll, we'll work through it. Please state your name and your address, and if there's a particular question. We actually have Mr. Wayne Castle in the audience with us today that will be able to answer some of the questions you may have, too, so.
My name is Jeanette Francis, and I live at 1015 Birch, Waterloo, Iowa 5702. And my question is, is I have pictures of my sidewalk, and I feel that I don't understand why I would have to do anything with sidewalks since they're, they're not broken, they're not raised, they're, I mean, to me, it looks perfectly fine.
Okay.
I guess that's my question.
All right, Wayne, can you?
I'll talk with everyone after, all the hallway after the hearing.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. He'll, he'll talk to you about it.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. And you did an excellent job. Yes, sir, you had questions?
Jason Van Clark, I own a property at 1656 Cornwall in Waterloo. I'm speaking on behalf of the sidewalk program. First off, I'd like to say thank you for caring about sidewalks. I think they're an important part of the community, and I think it's great that you're trying to keep them in, in good repair. The reason I'm here is my property is the only property with a sidewalk within at least three houses, and that, there's only one other house I can see within three blocks that has a sidewalk, so I was curious if there are any considerations for that in the policy that the city has. And I'm assuming that he'll probably be able to answer that question afterwards as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, we wanted to hear, you know, basically have it on file.
Sure.
Your questions, 'cause it always gives us an opportunity to take a look at what we do. But Wayne, you will talk to him after, or after we finish this portion of the meeting, so you won't have to wait till the entire meeting. Can meet right after this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to ask questions or talk?
Yeah, my name's Nancy Hammond, I'm at 1433 Forest, and I'm, like a lot of people, getting older, and money is very tight, and this looks like an unneeded project when there are so many more important things. I can see a badly cracked sidewalk, but not what I observed in our block on Forest Avenue, and the engineering office can verify that. But this is a terrible strain on older people, and then they start to get sick, and it's hard when you see money going for a non-needed project.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hammond, did you, what, did you receive an assessment, or you're just saying overall?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay.
I, I did, and, and I had the engineering office come out and so forth.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Bruce DeBier, Cazzer, 506 Sycamore Street, and I'm here to say that I'm on several committees dealing with the city council, committee meeting groups that meet with, that address the, as in question, like for safety and ADA compliance, et cetera. I'm here to say I'd like to be able to go check out these locations and give my best guesses to mention, too, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Bruce, are you on the ADA Commission?
Compliance Committee, yes. Most on the complete streets, I'm almost on the complete streets, I attend several meetings.
Right.
And I'm for my employees, but.
Okay, okay.
It's your strong interest. And if anybody, possibly everybody out there needs, needs some help or
Okay.
Questions, feel free to contact me, too.
Okay, okay, all right. So, you said you wanna visit some of the sites? Or you're just making sure that we?
I, I need to talk to, like, Eric and, and find out what the complaint complaints are about these, these places and see if they're, 'cause too many of these projects, they get done before anybody takes, takes a look and sees what really needs to be done, in my opinion, I mean.
Okay.
To meet, like, the different requirements.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So, we'll have Eric or Wayne or someone talk to you in due time, so we can talk about some of those issues.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right.
For good meeting.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about this particular item? A few of you I know want to talk to Wayne in a few seconds, but anyone else going a
Hi there, my name is Gerardo Rios, I'm from 1820 47th Avenue, and like many people survey here, it's tight budget, and to be honest, I don't think you guys given us enough time to fix the wall, those sidewalks, and for me, it's a three or four month period, I mean, I don't think it's enough. I mean, if you guys will let us know with time ahead, I mean, people can save money for that. Now, what do I, what other options do I have for that? There's any other program out there for that?
Do you wanna? Do you wanna have a talk? Wayne, or do you want me to describe how the assessment program goes?
Eric Thorsten, City Engineer, based on the amount of, well, I guess to back up a little bit, property owners have the opportunity to fix a sidewalk themselves by hiring a contractor, becoming bonded, following all the correct procedures, or they can let it go into the assessment program, and then the city will do the work, and then actually assess folks what the actual costs are. So, there's a couple of options. Unfortunately, the state legislature did raise the maximum amount that has to be paid in the first year to $500, so if anybody's proposed assessment is, or actual cost would end up being $500 or less, it has to be paid in one year, whereas anything above that can be spread out over several years.
And Eric, when you say assess, that means it goes on your
Property tax.
Property tax, and that timeframe in which they would have to pay from this point will give them roughly how many months for the first portion if there is more than $500?
Well, actually, we would have the period for folks to get theirs fixed, and I think the last date for permits is in July, and then after that, we do an assessment contract in the late summer and fall. We then send out the final assessments, and then they have 30 days that they can pay some of that, all of it, or none of it, whatever remains, as long as it's over $500, would then go on to the taxes, and that wouldn't appear on the tax bills until, I think, March, correct, you?
So, that money will be added to the taxes at the end of each year?
Goes to September of next year.
About $500, correct?
Yeah, at, 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 at most.
It would go to, Suzie thought it would go to September.
Yeah, I think it goes on September's.
And who do we talk about this assessment? Who can?
You can talk to the gentleman right there, he'll, he'll work it out.
So, you're, in, in effect, you have almost a year from the time we complete the work until the assessment is due.
And that's only if it's under 500. If it's more than 500, it can be spaced out over years.
Mine is 1,900.
Okay, so, yeah, through the assessment program, if you have the city do it, it can be spaced out over a number of years where you just pay a portion of it each year when you pay your taxes, and Wayne should be able to give you that schedule.
Will be any interest, interest in that?
There is interest on it.
Yes.
And that's collected by the county.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Hate to be a burden, but the question to me was, if I let the assessment do it, I don't quite understand on the verbiage in this. Do I have more, is there gonna be more things added to it, or is it gonna be, I don't know how to, I don't know exactly how to pronounce this. I have, they gave us an estimate, okay? But then it says if you waited to put it on your taxes, or on, like, your property tax, there's gonna be more things added to it. Is that what I'm assuming, or is it just that? That's my question.
The county does charge a small fee, I believe it's $5 per assessment, but then they also do charge interest, and I believe it's 9% interest. You do have the option to pay it early, so you don't have to take the full amount so that you have that longer interest rate. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but in general, we've found a lot of times, too, that because we are doing it in such bulk, that when you allow the city to do it, you do sometimes get a cheaper rate on doing it if you were going to outsource it anyways, a lot of times.
That's what I was kind of, that's.
Such a large. And then you do have the ability to pay it before it gets assessed, so that there are no additional fees. You can still just let the city do it as part of the contract, and then once you get the bill, pay it in that, I think it's 30 days, that we give you before we assess it. And if you did that, then there are no additional fees. It's just the actual cost of repair.
Okay. That's what my question was.
Yeah.
So if you do it within the 30 days, they give, so if they come out, let's say they do my sidewalk. They come out, they do it, I get a fee thing, whatever, and if I pay it within that 30 days, then there's no extra charges.
Correct.
That's correct. But I think what she might be referring to, sorry, Eric Thorson, City Engineer, what she might be referring to is, when we go into the assessment program by state code, we also have to charge for some of the staff time that's involved. There's staff time in the engineering department, staff time in the clerk's office. So there can be a little bit more expense added to that, but that's spread amongst all the assessments. But there is that. So in some cases, it may still be cheaper for folks to get it done themselves to avoid those costs. Another thing you might do is if there's others in your neighborhood, try to work together and maybe hire one contractor that will come in and do a whole bunch of, once typically will get a little better price. I know that's what we did in my neighborhood last year. I had one square to fix, but we organized, I think, about eight or 10 property owners, and all hired the same contractor, and we got a really good deal. So if there's other folks in the neighborhood that want to work together, that's certainly another option that might reduce some costs.
Okay. Eric, also, the estimate that goes out to the homeowners, the actual cost will never exceed the estimate, correct?
That's correct. The amount that we send out to folks, we cannot exceed with the assessment program. And so that, we do have to estimate kind of high, because, you know, we don't know all the expenses upfront. But still, when we do it in the assessment program, we use the actual bid costs and actual costs that we have. So typically, it has come down a little bit from what we send out.
So basically, what's on my paper isn't going to go up?
It's the highest.
It'll be the highest. Okay. That's what I want to know, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry. The motion is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing proposed repairs to sidewalk.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know this came up last year. If we have some of those extraordinary circumstances, like the one gentleman that has a sidewalk to nowhere, in the middle of nowhere, do we have the authority, the council have authority, to grant waivers to somebody like that? Or is there a system in place that somebody could review that and say, well, you know, this is really kind of a waste of money and time to fix a sidewalk that has three blocks on either side of it, empty? Is there a way we can fix this, or is that just, it's, or do we not want to get into that? Do we not want to open Pandora's box, I guess what I'm trying to say?
Counsel could always open Pandora's box. But I think there's, I think there's some challenges with doing that if there's unfixed portions or an accident, so Eric wants to.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. All the sidewalks that we're inspecting and require repaired are on public right-of-way. So there's a real liability for both the property owner and the city if someone should sue. That's why we do this program. So if there is sidewalk on public right-of-way, and there are issues, and it does not meet the standards of our code, has deficiencies, those do need to be repaired. We're opening a big Pandora's box if we don't do that, because, you know, we get sued enough as it is, I guess. And certainly, we don't want property owners to get sued. We don't want to get sued. So that's the real reason we do this.
Sure. And I think last year, you told us, or told me anyway, in the case I brought up, if he took it out, if the person took it out, the cost to remove that particular sidewalk probably exceeded the cost to repair the two or three panels.
Generally speaking, that would be the case, because by the time you pull out a lot of sidewalk, and then fill it back in, plant grass, sod, whatever, can exceed the cost of repairs, unless the whole stretch needs to be repaired or something.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Good question. Any other questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution adopting proposed resolution of necessity as proposed or amended.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to reopen the public hearing, which is approval of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement to authorize conveyance of Lot 3, a Block 16 of Hayes Edition, and a portion of alley to be vacated to Three Little Lambs LLC for $1.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is reopened. Is there, are there any public comments about this particular item? Is there anyone I'd like to speak for or against, or have any questions? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of a portion of Lot 3, a Block 16 of Hayes Edition, and a portion of the alley to be vacated to Three Little Lambs LLC for $1, in accordance with the First Amendment to the Development Agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions about this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing. That's for the 2016 Storm Sewer Improvements Contract Number 906.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications from of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Council, any questions about this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to receive and file instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. There was two bids. The first bid was from Beath Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5%, and the bid amount was $169,152.95, 169,152.95. The second bid was from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5%, and the bid amount was for $171,014.15, 171,001.4.15.
All right. Thank you. All right. Do we have to take these separately, or?
No, I think you can take them all. Yeah, we're just saying they're postponed. We just need to say that items five through 10 are postponed, the general obligation bonds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve postponing the hearings on the general obligation bonds, which are number five through 10 on tonight's council agenda.
Second.
To May 23rd.
To May 23rd, excuse me.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. The motion go to the roll call.
What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's move to the 23rd. All right. Someone take 11 through 13.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number 11, a resolution approving extension of the moratorium for a period of eight months, ending on January 31st, 2017, on the issuance of a special permit or license for the establishment of any new recycling junk or salvage yards. Number 12 is a resolution approving contract with Main Street Waterloo in the amount of $2,233 for event activities at Burns Park for the 2016 My Waterloo Days Festival, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement. 13 is a resolution approving contract between U.S. Equal Attorney Commission and the City of Waterloo Human Rights Commission in the amount of $50,000 for charge resolutions intake services, fiscal year 2016 EEOC FEPA training, and fiscal year 2016 FEPA engagement funding.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions about 11 through 13?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We just have a brief overview of item number 12, what that's about.
All right. Paul?
Paul Huddington, Leisure Services Director. This is just a fee that Main Street is paying for lost revenue from closing Burns Falls. In the past, we have also had an amount for the swimming pool, but they've opted not to do that this year. That's the reason for the reduction in the amount.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Those items carry. 14 through 16.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for approving a change order number five for net decrease of $28,490.41 for the fiscal year 2014 Stormwater Lift Stations, the Hollywood, Cedar Bend, and Fletcher area, the contract number 836, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 15, a resolution approving completion of project, and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Rickliff's Excavating LTD of Anamosa, Iowa, at a total cost of $6,550,433.29 for the fiscal year 2014 Stormwater Lift Stations at Hollywood, Cedar Bend, and Fletcher, contract number 836. And number 16, a resolution rejecting the bid from Peterson Contractors, Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa, in the amount of $2,574,337 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2016 Fourth Street Bridge Canopy Repairs, contract number 8910.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made with the proper second. Any questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On resolution number 16, I know we're going to go talk to the contractors and see if we can lower the price, or see what alternatives we can do. Can, at that time, we maybe explore some other options to that bridge? I've had a lot of people say, why don't you just make it like the 18th Street Bridge, with those little bump outs and different lights? But anyway, can we kind of look at all options now, instead of just fixing the old canopy?
Eric Thorson, yes, that would be our plan, is to look at what other options might be out there. Obviously, what you would be talking about, I think, would be removing the canopy and replacing the walls with some kind of railings or something. Now, we'll have to get some costs on that. And obviously, with a bid now that we can at least refer to, and with talking to contractors, maybe we can get better handles on prices and things. But that's definitely our idea, is to look at other options, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr.?
Morrissey, go ahead.
Yes, Eric. One of the suggestions that has been made is that, instead of doing this all at once, that it be pieced out, such as getting bids for the concrete work separate from bids for the metal or the structural steel work, as opposed to bids for the, just the canopy panels, and then the painting separate. So having it be done in four different projects rather than one total project, could that be considered as well, Eric?
Yeah. I think, I think at this time, we're probably taking a look from new suggestions to breaking down the project.
So having it be done in four different projects rather than one total project. Could that be considered as well, Eric?
Yeah, I think at this time, we're probably taking a look from new suggestions to breaking down the project. But I think there's several options that are potentially on the table.
We could take a look at that, too. It may really depend on how you do the work. In order to replace the concrete parapet walls underneath the canopy, you have to remove part of the canopy to do that. So there may be some things that can be done separately, but it might be a real coordination nightmare to do that. But we can definitely take a look at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Eric, isn't part of the significant increase in this based on EPA and DNR mandates because of this work going on above the river and having to do all the safety catching of all the materials rather than letting it go into the river, that type of thing?
We do have to do some work to make sure that if you're working on that steel framework and stuff, that whatever you take off of that does not get into the river. So there definitely is a cost for those types of environmental mandates. And so there's, I know, I think, real early on, there was one contractor that kind of toyed with the idea of taking off the framework, taking it somewhere else, working on it, and then bringing it back. Obviously, you'd have to do that in pieces. So there may be a lot of things we can explore.
But just to be clear, then, we won't do anything with this bridge this year, right? Because we're going to be out of time to be able to proceed whatever we decide.
That would be correct. I mean, I think another issue that we had was we were hearing that some contractor's schedules were already full for this year. And I think that is pretty well worn out by the fact we only got one bid and we had been talking to quite a few contractors prior to this. So it's just very busy. You have to remember that with the state increasing the gas tax, there's an awful lot of bridge work going on around the state, not only by the cities but by the DOT and a limited number of contractors. So everybody's schedule filled up pretty quickly this year. That's definitely something we need to look at, too. If we're going to do something in the future, we really need to bid it at the prime time.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone can take 17 through 19.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt.
17 is adopting a resolution approving a supplemental development agreement for Phase Two of the former Grand Hotel site for the Grand Crossing multi-phase development, deeding the Phase Two property and awarding a 20-year tax rebate schedule awarded for Phase One, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents. 18 is adopting a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECom Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount estimated at $318,000 for the construction-related services for fiscal year 2017 Dry Run Creek Interceptor, contract number 877, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And 19 is adopting a resolution approving a word of contract to Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, in the amount of $346,508.25 in conjunction with fiscal year 2016 Galactic Drive and Fitzway Drive Extensions, contract number 896.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind.
Hey, no, I have a question. On the resolution number 17, when we did Phase One, as I remember, that they had options to do Phase Two, Three, whatever, at the same rebate schedule. Is that, is that what we're doing now, is just performing what we agreed to when we first started this project?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. That's exactly correct. They've set this up with the former Grand Hotel site. We believe there could be two phases of projects to be done there. There's some potential IO DOT land that we're working to look at acquiring so they could do a Phase Three. And obviously, things are going very well with Phase One, that they're looking at Phase Two. And the developer is here in the audience, Brent Dahlstrom, if you have any further questions on the specifics of the project. But we're essentially working through the original master development agreement, which spelled out all three phases as potentially being out there. And so they're moving ahead with Phase Two under the terms of that original agreement. The supplemental agreement then spells out the specifics of the number of units, the type of construction, the design of the building. And the tax rebates are the same, and it has the minimum assessed value of 3.5 million in there.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Those items carry. Number 20.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to rescind the May 9th, 2016 motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance approving a request by Lamar Advertising for a site plan amendment to the S-1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 40-foot-tall, 378-square-foot off-premise billboard located at 2010 Sears Street.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What is, isn't this basically saying you're, we're going to give this defeated motion another chance?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. When this came to council the last time, there was only five councilmen present. Because it was recommended for denial at the planning commission, it did require a supermajority, which requires six of seven. And of course, there's only six now, but then there was only five at the meeting. So they have, the company has asked to rescind this so that they could have a fair opportunity with all six councilmen present at another meeting since it would take all six votes. So they felt it would be more fair. And normally, if we would have caught that ahead of time, we would not have had to try to have you vote with only five of you present, knowing it takes six of you to vote. So this is to give it a second shot, you're correct.
So it takes a supermajority. It would take six votes to pass.
Yes, it would. Unless they would go back, they would also have the option of going back to the planning commission and trying to get a recommendation of support there.
Okay, so is this going to take six votes?
It would in its current.
No, is this motion going to take six votes?
Oh, no, this takes a normal, no, this is not.
And this was at the recommendation of the attorney due to the fact that the initial vote shouldn't have happened. We didn't even have enough members present.
Mr. Mayor, so, no, so in other words, when we voted, we couldn't possibly pass it? We only had five people.
Right, that's correct.
And when is the contemplated time to bring it back? Do you have any idea?
It will be at their request. They, again, can choose to take it back to planning or they could submit a new application to bring it back.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing now is that because planning and zoning actually said no, that is why there was the supermajority needed in order to, for it to pass.
For this particular request, they needed a supermajority.
So if they brought it back to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning said yes, then it would not need the supermajority, is that correct?
Correct. Pick up fast. We all are. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
It's a motion.
No.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, it is oral presentation time. It is your opportunity to address the city council on a non-agenda-related item. Please step forth, state your name, your address, and your comments.
I think we have the right to know who these people are when they come up here and you're passing things that say "three little lambs", but we're going to sell them property for a dollar that belongs to the taxpayers. I think we need to know who those people are. And so when you're passing this stuff for a dollar, you got to attach names to it. It's who are these people that are, that we're giving property away to for a dollar? We respectfully ask that. Maybe you put that on your agenda and discuss it?
All right.
And I thank you.
Thank you.
David Driver, 3145 West Fourth Street. I guess my only comment tonight is, are you working on the budget for next year now? Because that, I think, is an important thing, that we get our council people out, talking to their constituents and making sure what they want to see happen in the city. So I think I brought this up in January after the budget was worked on. Let's continue to work on the budget for next year now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Greer, and I live at 23 Lafayette Street in Waterloo, Iowa. Yesterday, I went to a town hall meeting called by Councilmen Lind, Schmidt, and Jacob. It became clear early on that I was a duck out of water. I even wondered to myself if this was an official city meeting. Councilman Schmidt later on indicated it followed the open meeting criteria. The stated objective was to make the city more efficient and that over the course of a series of town hall meetings, they would be looking at all the various departments. I believe we all applaud the idea of an efficient city government. What quickly became obvious, however, was that those present were strong in their opinion that efficient means austere. And the concerns was that Waterloo has the highest levy ranking of the largest cities in Iowa. Budget accounts were displayed, and there was much concern about things as minor as $2,000 overtime costs. Don't get me wrong, there were many valid perspectives, but the overall tenor was the need to control runaway spending. I am speaking tonight on three points. I don't think I'll get through all of them. First, I am of the opinion that what makes a city strong is not their levy ranking, but their thriveability index. I made up that term. And to me, it means leisure and cultural opportunities for the citizens and an effective and responsive infrastructure. The fiasco over the White Water Park, White Water Park, how do I say that? Is a perfect example of an opportunity missed. I believe that more citizens support a high thriveability index than an austere budget. One need looked no further than last fall's successful ballot by the Grout Museum District, which will further impact that levy ranking. In full disclosure, I did not vote for the grout on the grounds I do not believe private nonprofits should be given tax authority. Even that issue was a non-issue to the voters. They spoke to the thriveability ranking it offers the city. Secondly, as a volunteer with the Waterloo Center for the Arts, I came to a city council meeting in support of the center and was part of what a councilman later called a flash mob. At yesterday's meeting, the back row boys and girls, as I learned their name, were given kudos for their persistence of opinion at the council meetings and that speaking up at council meetings does impact the council. I agree. Even the flash mob was heard. Unfortunately, I'm out of time.
Yeah, and we kind of try to keep our comments somewhat, Jermaine. So thank you, Mr. Greer.
Forest Dillu, 1725 Huntington Road. Over on Amesboro Avenue, we have some recycling bins over there for cardboard, plastic, and the various materials. They're having one terrible time trying to keep that cleaned up. Our citizens are abusing that location. They're throwing out all sorts of things, dirt and toys and appliances. And it is terrible. Mark and his folks are trying real hard to keep that and provide it for the citizens of Waterloo. I've notified them sometimes when things are overrunning down there. They've added a cardboard, extra cardboard, because they're filled up every day and dumped every day. That is a highly used and valuable piece, but we need to take care of it. And we need to try and stop those citizens that are abusing that.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers and audience. Thank you for allowing me to speak my piece again. I'm Bruce Tivier-Kazner from 500 Sycamore Street, Waterloo. I'm just calling to say that it's good that we have the council should grant an opportunity to speak our piece, wish our ideas, and support our causes. It takes more than just one voice at a time, it takes a whole group, a collective group, to solve some of these problems. We've got a lot of bad things going on in Waterloo right now, the need a bunch of people helping overcome, turning over and making better. And I want to do my part to help make Waterloo the best city ever. Be kindly. God bless you.
Thank you.
Don Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Yes, we did have a meeting Sunday. And I think we're going to change our name now to concern citizens of the back row. The meeting, this gentleman did exactly what we needed. He came down and gave us an opinion tonight. That's what we need. That's what that meeting was about, was to promote Waterloo. And we know that not everybody is going to agree. We don't try to make anybody, we're not trying to armstrong anybody or anything. I want to commend the councilman that did show up. Everybody was invited, all the council, all the department heads, everybody. All the citizens always are. So our ideas are to blend and make the city as good as it can be. Because we differ in our basis of taxes and spending money. Mr. Amos was at a meeting Thursday night. Cedar Valley Makers, part of the John Deere operation, volunteers and stuff. One of the greatest operations in the world. My first thought was, when I looked at that, and I didn't get a chance to ask him, but are we better off spending $4 million with the Cedar Valley Makers and doing things like that to educate our young and to teach them what to do? Or to put together a few dollars for a few people that can ride a raft that we don't have no clue and will never make a nickel on? And that's what that meeting's about. We all have opinions, and we're all welcome to voice them. That's the name of the game. So we still thank everybody that comes down here. We thank all the department heads, all the work is done. If you don't like what we're doing, come on down, we'll talk about it. We're trying to promote the city. And if we're short various different things, we're trying to improve that. But to say that we're the highest taxed and we've got certain things, but we have no education facilities, our schools aren't up to par, a lot of other things that we're all working on, because we don't just do this. We spend a little time down at the schools stuff, too. This is our city. That means everybody that comes down here or anything has their right to their opinion. And we're all supposed to see if we can get this blended together. This isn't a Democratic Republican Party. You know, this is, this is real business for us because it's our money. This is where we live, this is what we do. And just to come down and say, hey, you know, we need a new bike path down here. What's that going to improve? Not that we don't need it, but let's think about, is this really going to improve the city of Waterloo and what we do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. If the audience has done. One thing I would, I would like to bring up, that at the meeting yesterday, it was brought up again about Ward One not having a council representative other than Mr. Lind and myself as the two at large councilmen. So I guess I'm wondering, what does it take to get a discussion started? I mean, I'm wondering, do we need to have a work session? Because right now, I don't know how much it would cost to have a special election. I don't know if I'd take 20% of a typical election because it's 20% of the city. Okay, so it'd be about $5,000. From a timing standpoint, we're looking at the earliest being the 5th of July. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so theoretically, we could have Ward One councilperson in two weeks if we did the interviews and auditions, correct?
You need to appoint, are you talking about special election?
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about interviews and appointment.
If you appointed, I don't have everything with me, but we would need to, council would need to put that on the agenda and make a motion that that's the route they want to go. Then we would have to publish notice of that prior to the appointment, and then we would have to appoint. So two weeks, no, because we don't have a meeting that second, or the last week. It would be June before you could actually get somebody on, if you were to appoint.
I mean, I just, I guess I'm kind of at a loss is who's running this conversation? Because I haven't heard a word since Councilman Jones has left as far as who's deciding what. And if we, if we go the application interview route, and I know there's a thought that we wouldn't be able to come up with four votes, I question that. But if we go that route and we're not able to come up with it, then we can go the special election route where, once we start down the special election route, there's no turning back. I mean, that's what we're going to do, correct? I mean, one, one would supersede the other, correct?
Correct. If you, if you go the special election route, once we've called for it, we're having a special election.
Okay, so I guess what I'd like to do is ask to get it put on the agenda for discussion purposes. And I'm, and I'm not saying that this is what we need to do, but I do think we need to be talking about it rather than sitting here letting three months go by by the time it's all done. So I'd like to, I'd like to ask to have that put on the agenda. And I don't know if I need to make that as a motion or how we need to do that, but I'd like to get that done.
And that's why we were having conversations with the county. Because, one, in part and in theory, it should be a decision by the people within Ward One who they would like to choose to have them represent them. And so that's why we've been having conversations with the county and the 32 days wait or July 5th or the, the, what do you call it? The primaries in June. It's, for the timeframe, it's kind of sticky a little bit. But I think it probably should go to the people of Ward One to decide who they want. So you want to move the discussion ahead?
Well, I'd like to move the discussion ahead, right. Do I need a second on that, or can I just ask to do that?
Yeah, we can schedule a work session for next week. Then we don't even need a vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. On a little different note, this week, May 16 through 20th, is National Bike to Work Week. And this coming Friday is National Bike to Work Day. And on Friday, Main Street Waterloo, in conjunction with the Cedar Valley Bicycle Collective, has put together a little event over at the First Friday Lou at Lincoln Park, one of our famous downtown parks. And downtown merchants have contributed a bunch towards the Bike to Friday Lou on this Friday, May 20th, with the Getaway City Band playing. And all that you need to do to enter in this drawing, and there'll be very good prizes given away, probably a bundle of five, is ride your bicycle down to Friday Lou, park it in the Cedar Valley Bike Collective's Bike Valet. We'll register you in, put your name in the drawing, and then we'll have drawings, probably five drawings, for these various prizes from downtown merchants at the second intermission. So I hope that you all will ride your bikes, not just all week long, but especially on Friday, and come down and enjoy Bike to Friday Lou. Friday, and come down and enjoy Bike to Friday Lou. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Most received, file oral comments adjourned.
Second. Motion being made with the proper second, all in favor? Aye. Admiss adjourned.